Good morning. It's 9:30, so we will call the county board meeting to order. I would ask that Trent take the role, and I believe we're working on getting everybody signed in here. Not everybody's up yet.
No, Bill can sign.
Ed, you're still off.
Really? You said I'm going to be here. So we don't have that all?
Ed.
Al is having trouble with whatever that is.
Lisa will throw something at him.
Yeah, I think we're going to go ahead with the meeting and we'll work on bringing Alan in conversation as quickly as we can. With that being said, I would ask Supervisor Lightnum, please come forward for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask the body to please rise.
Okay, this is Al. I have a phone call. I was way back there, Mr. Chairman. Morning.
Good morning.
Beautiful morning it is. I rode the motorcycle in this morning, and there was that tip, that fall in the air. It felt good. Please join with me in a word of prayer. Lord Father, since COVID-19 entered our lives, we've discovered that this not just nation, but planet is suffering from two epidemics: COVID-19 and COVID-19 fatigue. The last six months is wearing on all of us. We want it over. We want to return to our old lives, but that's not going to happen. Lord, as such, we have new responsibilities as supervisors. We have to be good examples. We have to be leaders in the fight. We have to anticipate new responses and safety measures. But most of all, we have to treat each other with more kindness, more appreciation, more empathy, more dignity, more concern for what we are all going through. Lord, I've seen this fight-the-pandemic-together attitude in stores, in parking lots, and on the open road. Our neighbors are doing it; we and local government need to do it too. Lord, help us soldier on, help us show confidence, and help us show leadership. Our constituents need our example. In this we pray, amen.
Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the fighting of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Lightnum. First order of business is the minutes from the previous meeting, entertain a motion to approve by LaFontaine. Second, by fire. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Al. We do have you, we can hear you now. Excuse us today. All right, so excuse us today, we have none resignations, we have none appointments today. We have the Board of Adjustment, three-year terms for Supervisor Ashbeck and Supervisor Winch, and I would entertain a motion to that effect. Supervisor LaFontaine, second by Supervisor Wagner. Any discussion?
No.
That's discussion, Mr. Hamilton?
Are we not using the little on the computer anymore?
Yeah, we will when we get to the resolutions, for sure.
All right.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to public comment, and I know I have a group here from the road builders, and I asked them to come to the microphone there in the back if they would please. Yes, if you'd just introduce yourself.
Good morning. My name is Aaron Rapp. I reside in Wood County, and I'm here, and I would like to speak on opposition on page 205 of the Agenda Letter E, the Service Agreement on the Townes. Belonging to a skilled trade, which I do, I'm a heavy equipment operator, and if we let this happen, where the county can go in and maintain these township roads and that, I mean, the local I belong to, we put a lot of money into training. So I guess it upsets me that we have 268 operating engineers in Wood County that are going to lose out on work like this. So the training that we do is second to none, and I think the taxpayers of Wood County get their money's worth when you are trained to do this work. So once again, I am speaking in opposition of these agreements with the town. So that's what I have.
Thank you. There any other comments from the road builders? Or any other public comment? Mr. Minor, if you'd work your way forward, Mr. Becker, if you would go... And as Jerry works his way forward here, I'm just taking a minute to go through this. We're going to get through the packet today, then we're going to have a few orders of special business today. We have Doug Brannan, the Associate Dean for Extension and Outreach, along with John Exo. We also have Jason Hausler from Area Extension, and they're going to be here also. So we're going to do those at the end of the packet. Mr. Minor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'm not here to complain or ask about anything from the Fire Department, so you can all take a breath on that one. I'm actually here to recognize one of your own. I'd like to have Jay Khan come up. And I'm going to read this. This is a certificate of recognition that on July 2nd, 2020, while driving with family, Jay Khan did give warning to the occupants of a home that was burning, with fire consuming the porch and extending into the attic area. After alerting local fire service, Jake did, with minimal regard for his own safety, extinguish the flames with a water hose located at the home. Jake's selfless act prevented personal injury to the occupants of the home and major damage to the structure. On behalf of Pittsville Fire Company, a job well done.
Jake, and I know you might be not bonded to that, but since your family's in the back there, maybe you'd like to say a couple of words. We don't often get lotted for what we do, but Jake did something pretty heroic here.
Well, I, it really wasn't much. Henry, my son back there, was pretty excited and happy. He's a, anytime we have a campfire, he runs out and puts it out. He's ready to sign out in the future. I really appreciate the black jury.
You're welcome. It may have not been a big deal to you, but it was a huge deal to the homeowner, I can tell you that. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Jake. Congratulations. And thank you to the Han family for being here today. Jake, if you might go say hi to them, why don't you go do that? And then I assume that that motion on the minutes included the July 21st and the July 31st meetings? That is correct? Okay. All right, as we get into the packet, we have referrals for August. Those went where they're supposed to. One was the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance. That went out. And then as we get into the packet here, we'll start on page seven. We have the Operations Committee meeting of Tuesday, July 14th, and that's on page, beginning on page seven and eight. The Operations Committee of August 4th on nine and 10. Health Insurance Ad-Hoc Committee meeting minutes, 11 to 14, pages 11 to 14. And those are meetings from July 7th, July 21st, and then there's a summary of what we did in that packet. And I think we made some good progress there, identified some shortcomings, some opportunities, and I want to thank the people who participated in that, Don for chairing that, and those who participated. As we move on the packet, page 15, we have our monthly letter of comments from our county clerk. We have monthly letter of comments beginning on page 16 and running through page 23, along with the income statements from our Deputy Finance Director. They're not here right now, but Ed, do you want to make a quick statement here? I don't see, I thought Al might show up today, but we have a new Finance Director, if you'd like to take a second.
Yeah, we have our new Finance Director, Al Ferber. He's been on board now a couple of weeks, two weeks, I think, this week. And I've already had the opportunity to work with him once on, we're comparing information, financial information on the jail issue. I'm enjoying working with him. He's very knowledgeable, he's very much involved. I think I'm going to have a good time working with him. You don't need me to go into the capital improvements just yet.
No.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. As we move out of the packet there, on page 16, like I said, 23, we have those income statements. Anybody have any questions there? Moving to page 24, it begins with a tentative financing timetable. This is in regard to the bonding that we're going to be doing for various functions this year. All of the information is included between pages 24 and 34. There's the Municipal Advisory Service Agreement, as well as the disclosure statements in that, pages 24 to 34. Any questions on any of that? It's pretty boilerplate language that you see with any time, any time we do a bonding situation or bonding resolution. The Human Resources Monthly Letter of Comment, pages 35 through 39, and that's for June. And the HR Department's Letter of Comments for July on pages 40 through 44. We've got the Treasurer's Report on page 45, and then that brings us to the first resolution in the packet. I'd ask the clerk to please read that resolution.
This will be Resolution 20-8-1. Initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation promissory notes in the amount not to exceed $4 million for highway projects and capital improvement projects. Fiscal note: Proceeds from general obligation promissory notes not to exceed $4 million designated as follows: Highway projects, $2.35 million; capital improvement, $1.65 million.
And I see I have a motion by Hamilton, I have a second by fire. With discussion, I may be even explanation, Mr. Wagner.
The only thing that they didn't do in this resolution, they didn't show that we're capitalizing the bond costs. What capitalizing the bond cost means is we're borrowing the money paid by the bond cost. So the final, there will be an additional charge, it's some $40,000 or $50,000 on there. But the actual capital improvements, we are limiting at $4 million. Most of it is for highways, about $2.3 million of it is for highways, and the bulk of it is, bulk of the rest is basically Edgewater and Norwood, or Anx, excuse me. So it's the, basically, these are just the basic things we need to do to keep the city or the county properties in shape and keep them functioning. There are some, very few IT things in there, but far less than last year, you'll probably be seeing more requests in the, for the levy in the budget discussions coming up here in the next month or so. So you'll see a lot of that. But this is just for the real hardcore capital improvements. I think we're keeping, we're keeping with our plan of staying the limit of about $4 million, and we're keeping with our plan to fund at least $2 million. Actually, we're funding $2.5 million this year in highways. So we're keeping up with the highways, we're keeping up with the, with the maintenance on our buildings, and I think this is probably the most conservative way we could go about it. So if you have any other questions, I'll try and answer them.
All right. Any further discussion? Supervisor Zerflue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Wagner of Operations Committee, could you be a little more specific on what's entailed at the Edgewater, nursing home place?
There is a list. I don't have a list in front of me right now. There is, I think there's renovation of a number of rooms. Does he remember the number of rooms?
Eight.
Eight rooms there to allow, if there, some of those rooms, the bathrooms in them do not have, they are not handicapped accessible, you can't get a wheelchair through. So it's that kind of renovation that's taking place at Edgewater.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? This is our first step along the way. Supervisor Ashbeck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there ever going to be a point that we're going to keep borrowing instead of passing a referendum to the county, give the people choice of raising their taxes? I think we're getting to the point that we should ask these people to consent to, if they want to have us increase the taxes.
Is there, I'll go to Supervisor Rose, I'm going to back Supervisor Wagner, go ahead.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that one thing that we need to always remember is that we have huge investments in buildings in Wood County. And if we don't maintain those buildings, the investment that the people have made in those buildings over time, it's wasted because we don't maintain. The Edgewater Haven, those facilities are old. He already alluded to the ADA, people aren't sharing bathrooms anymore in the more modern nursing homes, and so we need to accommodate rooms where they have private bathrooms. They need to be wheelchair accessible, and so we have to widen them and make the bathrooms bigger so you can get wheelchairs in there. But a lot, you know, we only borrow for capital improvement projects. We don't borrow for operating. It's illegal. We can't do that. And most of what we've got to do is infrastructure support and maintain the investments that we have. I don't ever see that totally going away, because there's all, there are always things that we're going to have to borrow for, and roads are a big chunk of that in order to get people and goods from our rural community so that they can be successful. So I don't ever see us never borrowing a penny and paying cash for everything. I think that would be unrealistic, but a lot of the maintenance and infrastructure support has got to be had.
Supervisor, let me go, Ed, just one second. Let me go to Mr. Clendetti, and then I'll come back to you, just so we kind of go over here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And when it is stated that the majority of this is going to highways, I'd like to remind that we've had $3.5 million bonding for four years in a row, and isn't that completed? Or why is it so expensive? Now, I understand borrowing is a good thing because of the low interest rates right now, but when you stand up there and say that highway is the majority of this, and IT and other places such as construction of buildings or remodeling of buildings, it's not a big part of it. So what is it, if it's not a big part of it? Is $3 million going to roads and $2 million to other things? Or $1 million?
Supervisor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll address Mr. Clendetti first. I did state that $2.3 million of the $4 million was the, was going for highways. That's a little over the floor, half of it's going to highways. And one of the reasons that, the sad truth about highways is, you're never going to finish it. Because there's this thing called deterioration by the traffic on it, and basically, they use what they call a paver system, which is they rate and rank the highways in terms of condition from 10 being a brand-new highway down to 1 being something just sort of gravel. And basically, what happens is your roads deteriorate, even a 10 is going to start deteriorating, and at a certain point in time, you want to get to it before it's a 4 or a 5 on a paver system. So the roads will constantly be done. We have to, we aren't going to do them once and be done with it. It's not a one-and-done kind of thing. We're going to be doing it over and over again. That's it. Now, speaking to Mr. Ashbeck and his comment, about when I was, when I was on the county board before, in my first life, in my first incarnation on the county board, the, we fraddled getting into borrowing at a point in time where we weren't used to it. We weren't doing it. We weren't doing a lot of borrowing. We were doing pay-as-you-go, and out of our levy. But what was happening, levy limits squashing us down this way, and expenses coming this way, we got to a point where we couldn't do anything else but start borrowing. And the Highway Department presented us with a plan. They wanted, I think they initially wanted $4 million a year just for highways over a 10-year period. And basically, what we looked at was a way where we could do a, we knew this was going to cause an increase in the levy, because debt service is exempt from levy limits. So we knew that that, whatever we borrowed is going to go directly on the tax bill. We knew that was going to happen. But we also knew that at a certain point, if we were taking out 10-year bonds, what would happen is, we would borrow, at a certain point, we would only borrow in any given year, the amount we were paying off in any given year. So now, the tax levy wouldn't go up. We were getting to that point. Our problem was we had a mountain decline before we got to that point, and we're getting there now. I think another, I'm guessing another two years maybe, and it'll be the point where we won't have to add anything to the levy, where the taxpayers, where we'll only be borrowing, and if we discipline ourselves, discipline ourselves to borrowing only that amount that we're paying off in any given year, we will not increase the levy for our taxpayers. So that's the plan. Does it always work? Well, there are the best-laid plans, and mice and men do often go astray. Yes, that could happen. But we, we will, we will try and do that, and we tried to put together the plan years ago that we would follow in the long term, and we would improve our highways, and we would do it with the minimal increase to levy for our constituents that we could possibly do. So that's what we're trying to do. And we're still, some of you were here when we did it, some of you were skeptical then. Good. I always enjoy the skepticism, because it forces us to look deeper into things and make sure we're doing what we consider to be the right thing for the county. So again, I appreciate the support of the board in helping us get to this point, and hopefully, we're getting close enough where we're going to make a big difference. So thank you for that.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? I'd ask you to please vote. Mr. Bry?
Yes.
That resolution carries, obviously. We have one, no vote. Thank you very much. Now that we're done with the resolution, I'll just comment to Supervisor Ashbeck's point. I highly doubt the state legislature is going to eliminate levy caps, although we lobby for that every year, so we have the ability to do that. Bonding happens to be the way we can solve the problem we have today, but unless the legislature grants that, we're in good shape. The other thing, just from a historical perspective, there are statutory caps on the amount we can borrow, and we're at about 10% of the allowable cap. So we've done, we've been very judicious in that respect. All right, let's go back to the packet, page 47, Health and Human Services Committee of July 23rd, that's 47 and 48. The report from the Health Department, beginning with Sue Comfortman's, our directors on 49 to 52. While I'm there, yesterday, the WCA had a webinar in the morning. They're going to do it again tomorrow. It's from 9 to 10. You get these questions all the time in regard to, what is the statutory authority of health officers? How do you enact an ordinance? How do you enforce an ordinance? How do you move forward? What can you do? What can't you do? And what can the state do? It was outstanding webinar. It was done by Andy Phillips. There was a question-and-answer session. They're going to rerun that tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock again. So if you go look at your WCA emails, you will find the link. It was one of the best ones I've ever been on. So when I often hear our health departments get criticized for what they're doing, some of it's because they're statutorily required to do it, or the state will step in. So every day we're out there, we're walking a tightrope, trying to comply in some respects and at the same time, provide those civil liberties that you have. So does anybody have any questions on that? That's a really good opportunity. Supervisor Lightnum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As my prayer indicated this morning, the pandemic is not over. It's not going to be over for a long time. I'm wondering, with the recognition that was offered this morning, if our health department, who I think is working 24/7, if at some point, we should bring them in, as many of them as we can, for just a few minutes, and recognize their efforts on the county's behalf.
So, no, absolutely. All right, pages 49 and 52, the Health Department update there. We move on, page 53, 4 and 5, the update from the Human Services Department led off by Director Ruwings. Beginning on page 56, and running through page 59, an update from Edgewater Haven, 56 through 59. Page 60 and 61, Veteran Service Officers Report. Page 62 begins the minutes of the Wood County Public Safety Committee, and that's 62 through 66. Any questions there, 62 to 66? We have Humane Officer Reports beginning on page 67. We have reports from June 28th and then all the way through July 25th, and that runs to page 72. So page 67 through 72 are humane officer reports. And then we start, we have a book here, kind of, the monthly report from the Sheriff's Rescue Squad, and there's other reports in there that come from the Sheriff's Department as they try to keep us updated. Rescue Squad is 73 to 78. And then there's the, there's a K-9 update, there's Crime Stoppers updates, there's the agreement for housing inmates out of county, and that's 81 to 86. That's the agreement with Adams County. There are patrols they do for the DNR, basically, the Natural Resources patrols, but that just runs all the way, just keeps going. So anybody, anybody have any questions on anything in the Sheriff's Department, Public Safety Committee minutes, and the services out the door, 90 and 91. The Safekeeper, 92 to 101. Our sheriff is keeping us informed. Sheriff Becker, is there anything you want to add?
No, they're all there.
No, they do an incredible job, and there were some questions asked a year ago as to, you know, what we do in some of those areas, and I think they've supplied adequate information, so people really get a feel for what they do on a daily basis. And then page 102 to 107 was the 2020 Inspection Report from the jail, and that's 102 to 107. And because they put all that great information in this packet, it brings us to the resolution on page 108, and you had all the background as to why they need this.
Yes.
This will be Resolution 20-8-2. To provide for unanticipated revenue from the Bureau of Traffic Safety housed with the Department, Wisconsin Department of Transportation's Division of State Patrol to finance additional patrol for speed, seatbelt, and reckless driving enforcement through September 2020. Fiscal note: The cost to be funded in 2020 budget, our lines item are presented there in the Traffic Police Overtime. The adjustment to the budget total, $17,191.
If you go to the board, go to the board for the motion in a second. I have a motion by fire, a second by Hamilton. All right, is there any discussion? Any discussion on this resolution? All right, here we are seeing none. I'd ask you to please vote. Mr. Bry?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Bry. And that resolution passed unanimously. Thank you. Page 109 in your packet, the minutes of the Seat Committee of August 5th, that's 109 through 114, 109 through 114. The ITBAC Board Meeting from June 11th on 115 and 116. The University Extension Report, beginning on 117, and running through page 123, 117 through 123. Then I have their annual report, beginning on page 124 to 141, and we are going to have a special presentation from them after we get through the packet today, but 124 through 141. One here that maybe Mr. Clendetti wants to make a comment on, the Clean Sweep flyers. Mr. Winch, I'm sorry.
Oh, Matt Liverpool, a difficult instructor, was on a percentage of salary, but now you work for a county, and got them, 50% of each. Are his wages adjusted accordingly?
Are the wages adjusted? For the two counties? Yes. And I'm sure when we get them up there, they can answer that question for you, too. As we get to the Clean Sweep, Bill, do you want to make a comment on that? You've kind of been at the point of this forever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the Extension Office for agreeing, putting out this flyer, and it went to all the towns. And it's August 29th of 2020, from 8 to 12 at the Marshfield Ag Station. It's going to be a little different this time, you're not going to be able to get out of your car and things like that, you have to open up the trunk and things like that wherever you're having it. Please utilize that. We don't have our tools to reuse in a telegram rapid, which was, we had over 300 cars the last time we had it, and we're not having it this year. And just to tell you folks, there's a lot of things going in the landfill now because of the covert, and nobody's picking up stuff, and I see, you know, there's no place for them, such as... because of the COVID. Nobody's picking up stuff. And I see, you know, there's no place for them, such as mattresses. I see mattresses all over the county, and I, you know, it's, it's a shame. I wish we did have our tools to reuse, but I'm proud to see that the county has put in money for a clean sweep.
Thank you, Supervisor Clendetti. And I'm glad they have the flyers, because frankly, Supervisor Clendetti wanted us to choose to reuse it, the Clean Sweep. Bill, this may preclude me from calling you and saying, Bill, when is it, and where is it, and how do we do it? Because he is a point person for information on that always. Back to the packet, page 144, you have an update from the Land and Water Conservation Department, beginning on 144, and that runs through page 150. The update from Planning and Zoning, beginning with Director Gruenberg's report on 151. And that runs all the way through 166. And that includes the PPE meetings we've had, the economic recovery meetings we've had. That's a total update from the Planning and Zoning Office, the economic development part of it, and the PPE part. Any questions there, 151 through 166? Page 167, Minutes of the Judicial Legislative Committee of August 7th, and that's 167, 8 and 9. Criminal Justice Coordinator Ad-Hoc Committee Meeting, 170 and 171. Then we begin Notice of Injury and Clendetti. Start on 172, and then run through 196. 172 through 196. We have an invoice there from the Humane, since August 7th and now on 2. We have the monthly report to the Judicial and Legislative Committee on 197, from the Child Support Agency. We have Corp Counselors, the monthly update on 198. And then a really good one on identification provisions, on 199 through 202, from Corp Counselor Caston. That was an interesting document. I actually pulled that aside. I copied it into a folder on my computer, so I had that going forward. Any questions there? Starting on page 203, Minutes of the Highway Infrastructure and Recreation Committee of August 8th, and that's 203, 4, 5 and 6. Supervisor Clendetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to speak on page 205, as the road builders did here. The motion, I spoke about the motion at the committee meeting. I think town government is the greatest thing since sliced bread. I really do. Just to think, the first town, the first county government in Wood County was the town board from the Towne Graham Rapids. Served as the first county board. And I've been to many meetings since the 1970s in which many legislators tried to give their towns. Towns aren't necessary. And my son lives in Alabama, and what they have for jurisdictions is everything is the county, except what is in the city. And that's it. They have no villages. If there's stores or stuff like that, it's a county that takes care of it. And my son happened to think that that's great. But I don't. And this resolution, not this resolution, but this motion, which I think should have been a resolution, it's kind of saying what a lot of counties are saying. Boy, you know, these towns, they can't take care of their roads. We'll bid on them, and we can bid at 10% less if the town don't do it. Everything is for county. I don't think counties should be in charge of town roads, just like they shouldn't be in charge of city roads, and they shouldn't be in charge of village roads. I think this is to destroy towns, and I really believe that in my heart. I think if towns are having problems, they should go to other towns. If they're running out of equipment or running out of people, two towns should join each other and get the proper equipment that they need and share it, and that way there you have better road building. In this resolution, it just doesn't mention the one town that requested help this year. It's requesting that we look at towns that want to do this. So, and I go to these meetings that are held by the county commissioner, Highway Commissioner. And I just think this is a way to take over towns. That's the only thing. When I first got on a town board, I know it goes way back to talk about when I first was on. But we used to take people grocery shopping. We used to send people to night school, and then they created the technical schools. And we used to do that. We'd give it up. We used to do healthcare. The united way that we have around right now, it used to be the community chess. And if you was the youngest person on the board in a township, you went out to every resident, and you collected for the community chess, which helped people in there. Now, I don't like seeing a county even saying that it may cost them more employees and to take over these towns. So I would like to see that, that just an agreement be made with that town and not towns, as it's said.
Let me go to Supervisor Hattie first.
I'd just like to, just to clarify a little bit about that. The thing that was being talked about, that isn't a resolution for the Highway Department to take over all of the work from the towns. That is, certain towns are coming to the Highway Department because they can't get workers to do the jobs, or they can't, they can't find anybody to do the work. This isn't the Highway Department, you know, out poaching work from anybody. It's just a request for them to fill in where no one else will do it. And this was just permission for the Highway Commissioner to talk to the towns and bring a possible work agreement forward. So there will be a resolution when a possible work agreement is completed. But this is just, just a preliminary step of rolling, being able to talk to the individual towns that need, that need work, if they don't have anybody to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Rose.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, when I read this, you know, it says regarding winter service. That, what does that mean? I don't even know what that means. I thought, was it snow plowing during the winter? I guess I'm looking for more of a definition of what does it mean to pursue an agreement regarding winter service? That seems pretty narrow to me, and I'm, it looks like we're expanding this a whole lot. And I guess I'm looking for a definition of what winter service is.
Supervisor?
Thank you, Chief. It's plowing salting roads. That's, they can't find people to plow in the middle of the night, so they're asking the county to pick up some of the jobs. Thank you.
Let me go to Supervisor Ashkett, and then go ahead, Supervisor Ashkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my experience with the town board, when we get the 40, 400 million dollars all the time, they're matching funds. Our local people, contractors are complaining that we're a nonprofit people competing against us that have to pay the taxes and pay for the roads. So the county is a nonprofit organization. Why should they compete against us?
Supervisor Clendetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I lost my train of thought, but get back. Oh, I wanted to know what this was. How it started out, excuse me for a mask, I hate these things. How this started out was townships were complaining that for one mile, or a mile and a half, or a half a mile, that nobody uses that road that goes to that county park, or nobody uses that road to go to the, there's no houses on it, to go to the forest. And by golly, if that road is only built there so people can go to the park and go to the forest, let the damn town, the county do it, because that's their road. No, it's not your road. It's the town road, and you should do it. And if you're having trouble, do it. Go to your township and annual meeting and request it. You get the proper equipment and you hire the proper people, not come to the county and let them do it, because we're the ones that's going to hire the people.
It sounds like the discussion is somewhat in its infancy yet. And there's, and I don't know what the possibilities are there, Jake, as you mentioned, but I assume that discussion was around the fact that they couldn't get service provided, and maybe in the long run, if there, maybe that's a last resort kind of issue, but still, I have to pull everything together. So I appreciate that. Supervisor Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, this, this motion seems to be more narrow in scope than I thought it was, you know, going to be. I, I mean, the road builders are here. Well, if this is only a snow plowing and salting thing, they're not constructing roads or anything. So the devil's always in the details. So I'd be interested in seeing, you know, what the details are. And if the scope is only snow plowing and salt, that puts a whole different twist on this motion for me than the bigger picture of other things.
Thank you. I just want to clarify. So Chairman Hahn of the HERC, you said that there would be a resolution coming back if an agreement was made. Is that correct? That's correct. So I think, in my opinion, let's let the committee do their, you know, have the discussion, do their due diligence. And if they feel that a resolution needs to come before us, we look at it at that time.
And if I may, I'll just answer, Supervisor Rose, you're right, they're not building roads, but they have heavy equipment. And they, and they do other things in the winter besides just wait for spring to come. So that's probably part of its 11. And I'm sure the discussion began when a town said, we can't get anybody. No matter what we do, there's just not capacity. I'm guessing that's probably where that started. But we'll certainly work on that. I'll take into account what the comments made by the road builders this morning as we look at this going forward. Thank you, Supervisor Hahn. Appreciate it. Everybody good on that at this point, at least on the minutes? All right, we're back to page, I think, 207, which is the monthly letter of comments from the Highway Commissioner. And that's 207 through 210, 207 through 210. Monthly update from the Parks Department, beginning with Director Schoolies on 211, and running through 214. The ADRC minutes of June 11th, beginning on page 215, running through 218. Central Wisconsin Fair Board of Directors minutes from June 22nd on 219, 21 and 20. Minutes of McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees, July 15th on 221 and 222. Their meeting from July 22nd on 223. South Central Library System Board of Trustees minutes on 224, 225 and 226. And then we have a final resolution in the packet, recognizing the long-term service, which we talked about last month.
This will be Resolution 20-8-3, to recognize this Wood County employee for years of devoted and faithful service to Wood County.
I have a motion by Clendetti, and I have a second by Hamilton. On the board, is there any discussion? Do I have to vote on the board?
No.
All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Thank you, Supervisor Brey. All right, that brings us to, first of all, does anybody have any questions of anything that was in the packet before we get to our special orders of business? All right, then at this point in time, we'll call on Jason Helsler. Jason is here for an overview of extension services. Jason, maybe you can address Supervisor Winch's question somewhere in the presentation. Thanks.
I certainly will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the Wood County Board of Supervisors. Hopefully, you can hear me all right out there. I want to take the time to, again, thank you for your support of our extension services here in Wood County. As Chairman, I mentioned, my name is Jason Helsler. I serve as the Area Extension Director, working with the Wood County office here, as well as the Marathon, Fortage, and Clark County offices. So I'm going to go through an overview of extension services here in Wood County. You have the annual report in your packet. I'll be walking through that briefly, and I have a few things in that, that report. But again, just, this is not an exhaustive presentation. I could, I could stay here for two hours and talk about all the things that we have available to Wood County through extension services, either here in our local office, or statewide with some of the specialists that we have. Who, you actually hear from a few of them just after this. The Associate Dean Doug Reneman from College of Ag and Life Sciences, as well as John Exo and his new appointment, work focusing on water quality. So for those that don't know about extension services, we've been in counties across the state for over 100 years. Our history goes back to E.O. Luther is the first county extension educator in Oneida County. And it was to bring the resources of the university to the counties, to, to people where they, where they live, where they work, where they play and recreate, to make sure that everybody, through the Wisconsin idea that the, the assets and the resources of the university extend beyond campus and make it out into the communities where people live throughout the state. And that's what extension services do. Here in Wood County, we're fortunate, because of your support, to have a rather robust office here. Every office around the, either area, the area that I serve, and around the state, are a little different because of the needs of the community. So, so the staff here in Wood County are really tailored to the needs of Wood County. So to Supervisor Winch's question about Matt Levert being our ag educator, being split between two counties, Clark County and Wood County, that was at a Seat Committee meeting about specializing. So as you have a report in front of you, the County Ag Economic Report, Wood County is number one in cranberries. So it made sense, based upon the need of cranberry growers as a large agriculture-producing, high-revenue generating entity, that we have some cranberry support in our local office. So what we did is we, we worked with the Seat Committee. I worked with the Oversight Committee in Clark County. They were looking for dairy specialization as well. Matt has that background, so he focuses on dairy between two counties, and we hired Allison John Jack, who grew up on a cranberry marsh. And so the county can see any change or adjustment in their fees for service, which I'll talk about a little bit, because of that transition. So that remained the same. And so being good stewards of taxpayer dollars, we were able to, one, maintain the level of service that we've had, because Matt was doing some cranberry work. Two, we've specialized so we can reach the need of those that need it the most. And then three, we didn't, the county didn't have to invest anymore. So it just made sense. And so to your point, Supervisor Winch, I hope that helps explain. And there's a slide at the end about kind of investment. So extension is a partnership with the county. So we are housed at the, we're the Division of Extension through EVA Madison. For those that have been on the board a long time, we were called UW Extension. And through the next-gen reorganization, with the system making some changes and adoptions with the two-year campuses. Extension was now, is administratively housed at EVA Madison. It's our own, in our own division. So while our logo has changed, while our colors may have changed from, from blue and black and white to red and black and white, the services that you get are as good, if not better, because of the robust system behind it at Madison to meet the needs here. So you have the written report in your packet, and I'll kind of walk through a few, few things there. Oop, I went backwards here. So agriculture. So again, just some highlights from 2019. We know that farmers are in crisis. I, you know, you can turn on WPR or any sort of station, and you talk about earlier this spring, a number of dairy farmers that were dumping milk, the number of farmers that are losing their farms to financial means. You think of some of those that actually, there's reports about the farmer suicide at an all-time high. They can't make their bills, and so instead of leaving a burden for their, their family financially, they've, they've chosen that path. And so we've actually, in extension and actually locally, have started working on farmers, work with farmers in crisis. So QPR, Question for Fading Referr, Suicide Prevention Training. John Strzynski from, from EVA Madison works with our local educators to disseminate that information. And that's really important at this, especially during COVID-19 and the financial constraints that some farmers are in. So a lot of farmers in crisis, and we work on that. So in the Agriculture Impact Study, it talks about the number of farms that are still family-owned, at about 97%. And I think we look at that to, yeah, they're family-owned, but they're maybe farming more land and those sort of things. And I, I'm not an ag person. That's, that's maybe something that Doug can talk about if you have questions on that. But we know that farmers are in crisis, so we're working on that. So I alluded to Allison being our new cranberry specialist. She grew up on a cranberry marsh up in Hayward. She left the state and now returned to her, her home state to work on cranberries. And this is actually something that we, we as extension have worked long and hard to do, partnering with the Wisconsin Cranberry Growers Association and Tom Lochner. This is a huge need, as identified by the cranberry growers. Right now, they're supporting it just with some, some ability to use their ag research station in Black River Falls. There's some Wood County dollars that are on there because of the split position. But most of the dollars for this position are state dollars that are coming in to Wood County to offset that position. So we are the first in the state, here in Wood County, to have a position like this, really focusing on a very specialized industry that is, you know, Wood County is number one in, but also serving the state. So looking at replicating that sort of delivery method to other areas of the state, actually working with the Ag Institute Director Heidi Johnson, a potentially one with vegetables and vegetable crop production. and vegetable crop production in the Portage area, or Portage County area, because of their large production there. So that's new and innovative for us. I mean, we think about really meeting the local needs, this is a local need. And offered a farm safety and rescue training, again, just a quick snapshot, with a lot of farms being automated, there has been a lot of, and I, the gentleman that was here that presented this Supervisor Hamlet's plaque, you know, the EMS people are called out increasingly to on-farm accidents because of the automation. And so we focus on best research of how do we help those farmers train their employees on best safety and management practices while they're on their farm, to avoid those sorts of risks. So an example of this is grain bins, when you're siloed, when you get in there, you can easily be crushed because of the weight of corn, if you get in too deep, and so working with those producers to know kind of what they're getting into if they get down that road. Community development, so many of you in this room are probably no stranger to Nancy Turk, she's our Community Development Educator. So a couple highlights there, so working with you all, as county board supervisors, to work through the annual, or the strategic plan, that took a while, and working with department heads, and really being that face, to bring all the people together, to have a voice in a plan, is one of the things that the Community Development Educator focuses on. So not necessarily getting in there and being the one that's saying, "Hey, this is the policy, this is the procedure," but making sure all voices are heard. So prior to Nancy, many of you may have worked with Peter Manley for many years. He spent 37 years, 32 years, I believe, here in Wood County, and so we're thankful for his service, and Nancy's kind of carrying that torch forward. So worked on the SO Smart designation, the solar assessment, working with the Renewables and Sustainability Committee, and really bringing all the pieces together. So the picture of Nefco Park and the solar panels that are up there. And then one of the things that we're working, that she's working on, is the Ready Grant, working with Jason Grunenberg and Planning and Zoning, and various others throughout the county, on a Rural Economic Development Initiative grant, with Purdue University and also UW Madison, and bringing in those resources here. So it's a grant to look at, what does the economic viability in Wood County look like in the future? This has kind of been, I would say, it was forging ahead and took a little backseat, not just because of the pandemic, but her efforts and some work of our educators have been shifted to helping those impacted by the idling of the Verso, the plant. So, and we'll talk more a little bit about that later on, but, so that's a huge initiative to work on, and Nancy's been working with the Seat Committee, Jason Grunenberg and Planning and Zoning, and other partners to implement that. Human Development Relationships, some of you may have known this program here as Family Living, so it's your HCE groups, it's working on financial literacy and education for adults and youth, parent education, the list goes on and on, food safety, but a couple things in 2019, financial security programs such as RentSmart. So RentSmart is a program that works with landlords and actually tenants of those that may have had some issues in the past, and working on best practice. So, you know, what's the responsibility of the landowner, what's the responsibility of the tenant? Those that are in financial hardships, what does it take to get your credit bill back up that you can get into place? And quality affordable housing is a consistent need in every community across the state right now, and we see that time and time again, and so the RentSmart program really works on helping those that they don't get into, and pardon the terms, but slum lords, and making sure that they're getting into sustainable, affordable housing, and not kind of being taken to the cleaners for that, if you will. They're actually, she just notified me, Jackie Keratini's our educator in this area, through the Marshfield Center, Marshall Clinic Center for Community Outreach, they just got a grant to expand this program, so that's part of one of the efforts included in that grant, and so this will be expanded more here in Wood County. So a wonderful program that has gotten regional and national recognition as a curriculum, is, and Jackie's one of the founder, founding members of that team to move that forward, and we're blessed to have her working here in Wood County. Partnerships with Whole Chunk Head Start, Boys and Girls Club, focusing on youth education about finances. In today's economic times, you know, it's often on the back burner for a lot of teachers, and different districts around the state and around the county have different requirements on financial education, personal finance management, those sort of things. We do our best outside of the traditional classroom, to interject this financial literacy for the next generation, because inevitably, you know, the things that, the decisions that we make now will impact our youth, well, some of their decisions will start impacting their future generations as well. So just a couple highlights there. Foodwise, Foodwise is 100%, I guess it's a federally funded program, so all the, for the staffing of this, Kelly Hammond's our Foodwise Coordinator, serving both Wood and Portage County, and then Hannah Windows, who's our Nutrition Educator. These are 100% federal dollars that come to the state to administer at the county level. So our staff here in office, there's no county dollars on these positions or on the program, it's the SNAP education dollars, so the Supple Nutrition Education Program. So those that receive SNAP eligible, get those benefits, we do the education for that. So we work with food pantries, as you can see, there was the Sweps Food Pantry, Raised Bed Garden, so not just going to the food pantry, but what do you do with it? How do you raise your own? And getting them the hands-on experience, the, hey, you can do this in your, either a smaller plot at your apartment, or in a container garden, and that sustainability piece. There's also work on getting EBT at farmers' markets, so they can use their food share dollars at the farmers' market to get quality, affordable food, instead of going to, you know, the grocery store and having to stick to what's on the label, but what do you do with that? So yet you've been given, from the food pantry, three zucchinis and one tomato, what can you do with it? So that's where our education comes in, and spending the time to do that. So these are, it's a very targeted audience, limited income, those that are on free reduced lunch with our school districts, so Meet and How Elementary School here in Rapids, working with those teachers on in-classroom stuff, that will be adjusted this fall because of different delivery styles and different methods of communication, but we're there, we're working with the teachers, we're trying to do our best to make sure they're getting this information. Forage Development, I guess, forage is one of our cornerstone programs in extension. When people think of extension, they think of ag and forage, and I'm just being honest, that's, when you ask somebody on the street, what do they, when I say I work for UW Extension, they say, "Oh, you work with forage kids?" Or, "What kind of ag do you work with?" You know, that's what I get, but we are, we're a broader organization, so I want to make sure that I highlight. The other ones too, prior to this, because this gets a lot of attention. Partner with Hewitt's Meats, so a very unique program with our forage families. In your, in your report, you see the number of youth that we're serving, how many clubs are in there, we have one of the, I guess, more robust forage programs around the state. Central Wisconsin has a huge forage presence, and primarily here in Wood County, over 700 members, over, what is it, in the packet there, 125, 150 volunteers, which I'll talk more about. The volunteers that we leverage, I mean, do amazing things for the community here, and the payback is exponential. But Hewitt's Meats did a program where they donated their time and actually walked through. So we have members in our forage programs that show at the fair, in the livestock sale, and they raise animals for market. Well, what happens when they leave your property? When it gets on that truck, what does it look like in the meat plant? What does it look like to be processed? So they had the opportunity, Hewitt's Meats said, "Hey, this is great, let's get the kids in." So they made their own brats, and actually saw those brat recipes on the shelves at Hewitt's Meats. Some were gummy bears, they actually put some gummy bears in some brats, actually, the Seat Committee was blessed that one day, they had a taste testing venture at the Seat Committee, one of those meetings, where Laura brought in some of the brats that were made that were actually for sale at Hewitt's for a limited time. But that was the work of our ag educator, and Laura Huber, our forage coordinator, put a countless amount of hours and time and time again, to see this through, and really focus on the education of, yeah, raising the animals, one thing, but what happens after that? Because we know, there's a lot of local meat shops that are always looking, Hewitt's Meats would be the first one to tell you, it's hard to find, this is kind of a dying art, and so how can we infuse that into the next generation? So there was 20, more than 20 kids that partook in the multi-layered educational program there. So Project Gen Connect, so this is working with our Family Living, or HCR educator Jackie Keratini, and our HCE groups to bridge the gap, the generational divide, if you will. You know, one of the things I hear from adults was, yeah, the, I think we've all heard the same, that our youth are disconnected from the, you know, their other generations, and this is a concerted effort to work with the HCE groups and, I guess, the generational divide that comes with maybe your 60- to 70-year-old ladies that are a part of HCE, and I'm not generalizing here, that's primarily, a lot of our ladies are in that age bracket, but then working with the youth, giving back to the youth, and vice versa. And they had a wonderful event, I attended the McMillan Library, where they did a sewing project, and you can see in there what they did and the impact that's had. And so they're continuing those in the future, and again, just a couple things there. Also, summer camps, summer camp was canceled this year, but you may have caught on Channel 7, Laura Huber on an interview focusing on the summer camp in a box, serving between multiple counties, hundreds of families, and 100 adult volunteers helped to make camp in a box, getting the resources out to those kids that couldn't attend physical camp because it was canceled, but how can you serve that experience at home? And then also support for the Wisconsin, Central Wisconsin State Fair. Again, we don't run the fair, the Fair Board runs the fair, but we have a lot of help and support that we give to the fair, and the junior fair part of the event, through our forage program. Natural Resources, so this is a new position in 2019, again, I'll briefly touch on this, but I think John and maybe Doug will kind of talk about some of Rachel's work here, and how it dovetails with their work, but again, focusing with our Seat Committee on water quality, and a huge need for that in Wood County and Central Wisconsin, the body decided to reinvest some dollars that were in our budget, and reappropriate those to a natural resources educator position. It's half a Wood County position and half a regional specialist, so Rachel serves a lot of the Central Wisconsin and Northern Wisconsin area, but primarily off, primary office is here in Wood County, and focusing on Wood County initiatives. So you can see that, working with agriculture producers, I actually just had a conversation with Sheen Walker Fanning from Land and Water, prior to this meeting, and he was talking about the good work that she's doing with getting some of the, they were planning a conference, but getting those things that were going to be presented at the conference into YouTube videos, to get it out to producers, when they can access it and on their own time. So some great work there. And then working on best management practices. So it's not just about increasing profits, but what's good for the land and water quality. So that's where Rachel comes in. Again, it's a new position, and we're excited to have her on board, and it's a, again, focusing on extension services, providing services for the local needs, and this is a local need here in Wood County and Central Wisconsin. Hort, many of you know our Master Gardener Program, one of our cornerstones as well, very robust program, about nearly 70 volunteers here. Janelle Weir was our Hort educator, up until actually Spring of the Issue, she took a full-time position in Marathon County, it's a part-time position, but you can see some of the things that were happening in 2019. Again, nearly 1,500 hours of community service from our Master Gardener Program, working with our educator out in the community, on various projects, to support the work of many of you and many of our, so you can see Edgewater Haven, now being with the sensory gardens out there, a monarch waystation. I mean, it's a huge thing for those individuals that are stationed there, spending some time at Edgewater Haven, and that sort of thing. Coffee talks at the garden, so there's a lot of things that are happening in horticulture. This is the busy horticulture season, you know, coming in, what's this bug? You get an entomologist on the phone, and get that diagnosed, and what's going on with my plants and trees, and those sort of things, and that's a service that we provide here through our educator. So that's kind of a quick walkthrough, but I want to say that, you know, our work of our local educators really ties into a system, it really does. So if we don't have a local educator here that can specialize in something, in our organization, we have somebody that can do it. So early on, with the water quality conversation, there are integrated specialists at the cows that Doug will maybe allude to a little bit, but also we have representation at UW Stevens Point, Kevin Massar, focusing on water quality, he has an extension appointment. We have people at River Falls, at Platteville, and so if we don't have something here locally, doesn't mean we can't deliver on a need in the community. So my ask of you as a board of supervisors is, if there's a need that you're seeing in your community, or here in the county, reach out to extension, because we leverage, our local educators leverage the state specialists to really get the information where it needs to go. So again, just because we don't have a person titled to serve a need on one topic here, doesn't mean we can't get it because of the network. So you're plugged into the network, if you will. So a question I always get asked about, okay, how does extension funding work? And I think, you know, in light of budget constraints and time, I think it is important to talk about this. So what I put up in front of you is not an exhaustive calculation by any means, there are things that are missing on both the county side and on the state side, but I just kind of broke it up. So educator fees, our support staff here in the county, office and technology, the services of IT is one thing, and on the state side of things, there's the reciprocation. So the staff here in our office are, it's a fee for service, and so you invest a part of the fee, the state picks up the other part of the fee. There are some educators that the Seat Committee has said, "No, even though the state can't reciprocate, we're going to double down and say, 'We'll fund us at 100% because of your investment and your desire to keep that member on staff.'" So as you can see there, it's pretty much 50/50, or almost 50/50, and again, I didn't include any of the additional services that are provided to the county, and because of state specialists or regional specialists that come in. So when John Exo comes up to the county, there's no charge to the county itself. When we bring in other state specialists in the region or in the state to come up, again, that's because of your investment on the local level. So, you know, if we look back at a couple years ago, when we went through a huge reorganization, there was some concern about, is extension still, with the return on investment for extension? And I think, you know, it's the partnership that we value the most. So you put in dollars, the state puts in dollars, we get grant dollars, so speaking of clean sweep, we work on procuring a grant through DAT cap that also comes in, you know, the grant that I was talking about with Jackie coming in. So we leverage your investment and pay that back from grants and/or reciprocated from the state. So knowing all budgets are tight, it really is that partnership that we look at, and this consistently is talked about at the Seat Committee, when they look at signing the contract with the university. And then lastly, I want to conclude with kind of our leveraged funding. So we in extension could not do a lot of what we do without our volunteer base. So Master Gardener volunteers, forage volunteers, you know, we look at some of the HCE groups that volunteer to extension, and so it's hard to put a cost on it, but I think, you know, it's important that you recognize that, in the community, the amount of money that's leveraged in your communities as a result of extension services, outside of just the one-on-one. So I put a conservative estimate on the chart in front of you, or on the board in front of you. So, you know, roughly a forage volunteer gives about an average five hours a month. I assume Supervisor Ashbuck could say that it's double that or triple that some months, and same thing with Master Gardeners. So conservatively, if we say that there's roughly 185 adult volunteers, as well as 68 Master Gardeners, five hours a month, and then, so the independent sector of nonprofits calculates that the volunteer hour is $27.2 an hour, so you can see the calculation there. So it's roughly over $400,000 annually that we leverage from extension staff through volunteerism in our communities. So if you think about how you pay it forward, this is how your investment in extension is paying it forward in your communities, through all the work that we leverage with our volunteers in forage and Master Gardeners and other groups. So again, I just want to conclude here, my portion of today is to, again, thank you for your commitment and support of extension services here in Wood County. We couldn't do it, this is really a true partnership between UW Madison Division of Extension and the Wood County Board of Supervisors, to bring the resources of the university to the people and constituents of Wood County, where they need it, when they need it, and how they need it. So.
Yeah, you can take questions, Supervisor Ashbuck.
To me, I think the whole key issue is, we haven't got these big farms, the cranberries and dairy farms, and we're still 97% family farmers. Is there any county better than that?
I think there are, and again, I'm not the, I think maybe Doug Reneman may be able to talk more about that, if you have that question, that maybe he can address that, but I haven't went through all 72 counties, there's a fact sheet, there's an ag impact study that's done for each county, it's available on our extension website, I have an chance to go through all that, but that's a good question that we can ask for, yeah.
Supervisor Rosa.
Thank you, Jason, that was very good, I just love this little sheet that you gave us for Wood County, it's got some really good information on it. You mentioned Hewitt's Meat Processing, and I just wanted to make an announcement that they're actually being honored as the Small Business of the Year, at a breakfast that Mackie is hosting in early September, so that partnership has been a really good one, and they are being honored for the work that they've done in Wood County and the surrounding areas, in partnering with other organizations.
Thank you Supervisor, yeah, they have been tremendous to work with, and Laura continues to talk about expanding that partnership, because they're ones that come to the table, they believe in youth education, so thank you for sharing that.
Any other questions for Jason? Jason, thank you for your part, appreciate that. I'm not exactly sure how we're segueing into the next portion. I'm not exactly sure how we're segueing into the next portion here. That might take a second.
Yeah, I think as Lisa's pulling that up, and I think John or Doug will be sharing that. But if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll introduce the next presenters. So, and I invite anybody from the seat committee later on to kind of talk about the work that's being done. But Dr. Doug Reneman was appointed Associate Dean of COWs, Extension, and through the College of Egg and Life Sciences. He coordinates activities between the College of Egg and Life Sciences or COWs and Extension, so bridging the gap of integrated staff to Extension staff. And he was appointed that in 2018. So he's working with John Ekso, and many, I said, some of you may know of John as a regional natural resources educator. He's taken on a new appointment. I'll let Doug talk about that and that partnership. So I think they may be online and getting some things rolling here. Technology is always our best friend when we want it to be.
Good morning, everyone.
Here we go.
I'm Doug Reneman, and I've been an Extension Specialist for 30 years. And we actually ended in this position of Associate Dean for Extension, which includes COWs just about three years ago. So if you want advanced, this is the next slide. So we're, John Ekso and I, we're here to talk about nitrate. We know that nitrate is not a new concern in the state, but it's a growing concern. Around about 10% of the state's private wells have in excess of the 10 milligram per liter standard. And, you know, that resulted in Wood County created a resolution that went to UW System President, and Johnny, just the next slide. So the Wood County Resolution went to the UW System President, and then it worked its way down to Deans, and then it took down to Associate Dean, which is where I'm at. So eventually, our resolution landed on my desk. And in response to that, we created this, our nitrate working group, and we've been in contact with not only Wood County, but also Portage County and other counties. And there's a couple of other things that are going on in addition to your resolution. You know, the governor around that time declared the year of water quality, and then the DNR has initiated a whole making process specifically related to nitrate. So when I did a quick sort of survey of the people in UW System, right now in COWs and Extension, but also other parts of the system, you know, the help was that we have well over 200, probably closer to like 300 people that work in some way with water quality and specifically nitrates and groundwater. So, you know, given that large number of people and all the different ways that nitrates are influenced, I created a coordinator position using some funding. We have a high rate freeze on right now, and so we had some retirements, we have a little, some funding available. So I created a position for John Ekso to coordinate our nitrate response. And I think at this point, I'll just, so John, you know, has experienced this area, he's worked in the water quality area of the central part of the state. And so with that, I think I'll just turn it over to John to explain what he's done and what he's doing and what our group is doing. Thank you, Doug. I'm honored to be here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Thanks for being here. It's a little bit challenging, of course, for all of us trying to conduct our business remotely, but gradually, we're all getting used to and a little bit more adept of that in spite of the technological challenges. So it's really good to be here, and I want to thank Jason for kind of handing over the conversation to us this morning, and also just thank Jason for being a good partner there in Wood County and in other counties that he works with. Just because, as Jason alluded, there's a lot of acting actors in Extension and needs across the state are very unique from county to county to county. And so having a director that understands what those are, has relationships with folks like you and your seat committee and those individual members of the committee and with our educators really helps make that system work. Doug alluded to with the working group that he appointed last fall. It's a working group that we continue to add and expand to just to bring in new expertise from UW, but that working group also includes local educators. So this is just kind of a sampling of the type of people that we have in our working group that's starting our response to nitrates and groundwater. So this collection here includes agronomists, soil scientists, geologists, hydrogeologists, climate specialists, water quality specialists, social scientists, communicators, and so on and so forth. You may recognize Kevin Massar up on the top row, a person who's presented numerous times with your seat committee and I think most recently presented sort of a summary of the science of nitrate and groundwater to the county board earlier this year, and I believe it was February, January or February, shortly after I started. So one of the things that we promised to do in conversations with Supervisor Reneman, Supervisor Curry, and others earlier this year was provide a periodic update to the sorts of things that we're doing in response to really your requests for resources as well as requests from many, many other actors around the state, including other county The first is that we're creating a dedicated website resource for this very specific issue of groundwater and nitrates. We've interviewed a number of public officials, including Supervisor Lightman, some state legislators, some other local officials on the exhibit information constituents of your seat. And partly because we know there's a very strong demand for this information on this specific topic. With the growing amount of water quality testing that private well owners are doing, there's more awareness and education about the challenge of groundwater contamination, specifically nitrates. And so people are seeking information, and in some cases, they're seeking action on the parts of local officials and state officials. And one of the purposes of this website is to provide a resource for the general public, but also for officials that are helping constituents and others understand the issue. Another initiative that we've started this spring is to start conversations with our partners and our colleagues at the Wisconsin DNR and Department of Egg, Fish and Consumer Protection and other organizations to try and align our priorities and our needs around nitrates. So we all recognize there's need for additional research, need for additional communication, consistent communication. There's also need for more outreach and education, as well as a need for more solutions to address the problem. So one way that we're doing this is seven of our specialists and educators at Extension are serving on DNR's civil advisory committee for the development of their targeted nitrate performance standard. It's a process that's ongoing right now and will continue through this year. That's just sort of an affirmation that Extension specialists and educators have specialized research and other knowledge related to this issue that can contribute to the state of science regarding nitrates. Some of our specialists are also working on new fertilizer fertilization recommendation tools. There's some innovative things that are combining data related to predictive weather events such as high precipitation rainfall with the timing of actual fertilizer application. The combination of those two are going to result in a new application for producers. They can hopefully reduce the leaching of nitrogen following high rainfall events, of which, of course, we're increasingly more familiar as our weather patterns change. We're also initiating some new, both internally and externally among our educators and then among professionals and others outside of Extension and UW on the state of science related to groundwater and nitrogen and best practices to address those. And then we're also conducting fairly limited but ongoing research on the connection between nitrate leaching and individual farming system, farm production systems, to better inform new decision-making about those practices and about policies related to minimizing and reducing nitrate leaching into groundwater. But this is a long-term challenge, of course. Both of you that follow this issue know that this is a complex problem that involves lots of society's segments. Obviously, there is a water quality challenge, this is an environmental challenge, this is a challenge for people with private wells, challenge for public providers. It's also a challenge for egg producers and producer organizations. So this is an issue that's not going away, and it's an issue that requires all of us to work together to address it. Be fully planned, stay connected through to Wood County, through your seat committee, through the membership of that committee, and obviously through our educators, Nancy Turick, Rachel Whitehair, and others, the egg educators, and through your County Land and Water Extension Committee and department staff. This is really just sort of following the history Extension has of working closely with our partners there and fully expect to continue doing that. One of the other encouraging things that we see, especially in Wood County, but also among other collaborative models around the state, is an opportunity to create space for conversations across sometimes contentious stakeholders and very contentious issues. The Farmers of Mill Creek Watershed Council is a great example of creating a platform and a space for work using science-based information, but also the realities of how that gets applied locally to reduce the effects of land use, water quality. And that's really one of the stated objectives of the Farmers of Mill Creek, much like other watershed councils and water shed organizations around the state. And we see that as a model for working more specifically on the nitrate issue, given how fresh this issue is in our society and how widespread it is across the state. We really feel like that and other models like that are great opportunities to set an example for working locally as well as statewide on that issue. And then really just sort of building from that, we obviously, given Extension and the university's role and history, feel like and believe strongly that sound science has to inform long-term solutions, whether those be quality solutions, whether they be policy solutions, land use-related solutions, or individual solutions and decision-making. We really strongly believe, and I feel like university is engaged at Wood County by our other agency partners and local officials, is because, you know, and people inherently know that science really should be a foundation, also in form of local knowledge, for decision-making and addressing long-term solutions. And we obviously intend to be a part of that. So with that, I think I'm finished with my remarks, and you're probably about finished with Extension, but I do want to open the floor to questions from the chairman or any supervisors, either either for Doug or I.
Does anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions? Supervisor Lightman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just not a question, but a little bit of information for our county board. About two and a half, three weeks ago, Supervisor Clendenning, myself, and a member of the Saratoga Town Board happened upon, we didn't plan on seeing this, but we happened upon a meeting of Portage County Land and Water Committee, which is comparable to our SEED, but of course, our SEED committee involves other agencies. At any rate, for probably 40 years, Portage County has not faced the problem of nitrates in groundwater like many of their residents would have wanted them to. What we saw that evening, John just alluded to it, is we saw both producers and residents in the community in the same group together trying to hammer out their way forward. And just to say this very quickly, what that committee decided to do was to begin calculations on how to reduce nitrogen. The numbers are incredible, talking about reducing nitrogen by 40% as it's put onto egg glands with possibly only a reduction of 10% in yield. I mean, that's what it's going to take to solve this problem. And they started committing to that. They said, let's start on a test plot and let's do those calculations, and over a period of time, let's see what's going to happen. And so I commended them at the time for their efforts. I think everybody in the room was surprised. It was a 3-2 vote in committee that evening, but they're moving ahead. And I think John and Doug, with what's going on on the state level and the extension level, will be right there to help them. To both of you gentlemen, Doug and John, who are listening right now, I said you'd probably do this program for the Portage County Board also, so don't make me a liar on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions? Supervisor Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to talk a little bit about how SEED has expanded, in my opinion, expanded the role between the three divisions, the land conservation, extension, and planning zone. They all, on water, have, if we don't have good water in Wood County, we've got a major problem. We've got a major problem for a lot of different issues. If we want, what's going on right now in Wood County with economic development, if we can't turn to new companies and say, we've got the best resources that are available, is anybody going to come here? Is anybody going to stay? So water is an important issue, and I think we're trying to utilize every tool or every effort, and we're using Extension more. They're providing more resources to Wood County and to the area. So I welcome John and this program to Wood County. I hope it's successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Curry. Any other questions, comments? I guess seeing them, appreciate the participation, Mr. Ekso, Mr. Reideman, Jason, for your updates. Thank you very much, and I'm sure you'll keep us informed with anything that's going on in the future. So thank you. Yeah. Got a couple of real quick announcements though before we get out of here. I see in the back of the room, I have the village president from Port Edwards here, and I also have his new administrator. Do you want to do a quick introduction? Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To my right is Raymond Boz Bossert. He's our new village administrator. He's career US Army Corps of Engineers. He and the Wood County Chair had quite the discussion down at Village Hall. He and the Wood County Chair had quite the discussion down at Village Hall over different things, and I think they're going to be in touch with each other. That's about all I know is Ray is originally from Georgia, and I will let him say a few words.
Thanks for dropping by, picking up the zoning map downstairs. I said, we'll take advantage of the time. So look forward to working with each and every one of you over time. 35-year military career, mostly done my time in the South, many deployments overseas. My wife's a Wisconsin girl, so I was drawn back here. So my first stint in Wisconsin as a resident, I'm looking forward to it. It's a great community, great area, looking forward to participating and not only helping Port Edwards, being part of that community and working on some major initiatives forward, but obviously with the county issues and procedures and processes and trying to get professionalism, relevancy, and building that in our port as well as other areas. So I just look forward to it. It's a great place, and I look forward to working with each and everyone. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being up here. Welcome. I mean, you have the board up. You know, Supervisor Clendenning touched on it before. I mean, we exist in silos to some extent, but we need to work across those jurisdictional boundaries everywhere, and the cooperation in both directions is extremely helpful in making a better community. Last quick update after is just yesterday was on the formal sales tax revenue updates. And Wood County's looking pretty good right now. The one thing we can't get our arms around from a statewide level is the disparity between counties. Give you an example, Marquette County, and they don't know why, Marquette County is up 65% in sales tax revenue. Now, why? Trying to drill down and figure that out. But generally speaking, across the state, we're in pretty good shape. We're going to be pretty close to the estimates at the start of the year. That and property tax delinquencies have not reared their ugly head yet, so I think we're going to be looking pretty good, at least through the remainder of this year, and then hopefully going into next year. WCA conference obviously canceled. We're putting together the means, methods, and technology to be able to do the business meeting part online, and then you're going to see an expanded legislative conference in February as our guest. Try to expand that a little bit to get some of that information out. Is there anything else that needs to come before this board today? Anything else? All right, seeing nothing, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.